I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We will now start the meeting. All right, first order of business. The stuff out here. Public announcements. Town buildings and non-emergency town services are closed to the public. Many services are available online. With some services being conducted by phone, email, and US mail. Public hearings, there are none scheduled. All right, public comments, which is limited to three minutes of public speaking. Members in the public may email comments to the council at info@fairfield fairfieldme.com by four o'clock the day of the meeting, or any topic or agenda item. Items may be read aloud at this time. Is there any?
Did not receive any, no.
Okay, okay. So, next up, fourth order of business, reports from staff and committees.
Okay, so the town office and all town departments do continue to function. We are functioning a little bit differently than we have in the past. We do remain close to the public with a tentative reopen date of May 1st. The hours at the town office. I mean, the staff in, in the town office has changed, whereas we're all taking turns. So that we're limiting the number of folks in the building to typically no more than three at a time. Folks are working from home. We are still answering phone calls, still answering emails. The code enforcement officer was in today doing inspections and building permits, so we are still functioning. It's just a little bit different than what folks are used to. And we are continuing to provide the best possible service that we can under the circumstances. However, we do ask if folks call and they don't reach a person, to make sure that you're leaving a voicemail message in a way for us to return a call. We've had a lot of folks who've tried to get through. And they're not leaving messages. And so to cut down on the frustration, just know if you leave a message, we will get back to you. And then the other thing that I just wanted to let you know about was that our streetlight project conversion is complete. Except for the large streetlights that are out here on Lawrence Ave. And the bridge crossing over into Benton, those lights were special order, and those should be coming in soon, hopefully. But the rest of all the streetlights in town have been converted. So that's, that's a great, great project. And that is it for me. I gave you a long enough one the last time. We're just trying to maintain the status quo and keep everybody functioning and everybody safe. So, so far, so good.
Excellent. Any committee reports?
I don't believe any committees have met recently. I do know that Economic Community Development postponed their meeting until next month, and the planning board is talking about possibly not meeting that until May either. So where folks are kind of trying to do anything except for, you know, unless it's an actual urgent piece of business, so.
Right. Okay, that sounds good. All right. Now we'll go to the fifth order of business. Which is the consent agenda. Now, these items are considered routine and standard, and therefore will be enacted by one motion unless council member requests that that item be removed and act as a regular action item on the agenda. So item 2042 is ordered that the town council hereby waives a reading of reading of and accepts the minutes for meeting 3G 2020-06 held on March 25th, 2020, and 20-43 ordered that the town council hereby approves the treasurer's warrant. So move. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we'll have to go for a vote, and I suspect that I guess the votes are gonna have to be yay or yes or no, I think probably is better. Because we're not, we're not all Scottish, so probably yes or no. We'll start with your.
Christine will need to do the roll call vote at this time.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, so John Pachotti, favor?
Yes, yes.
Michael Taylor?
Yes.
Courtney Chandler? I didn't hear you, Courtney.
Yes.
Thumbs up or thumbs, okay. Thank you. Peter Lawrence?
Yes.
Stephanie Thibodeau?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So now the sixth order of business is to take action on the following items of business. All right, list it down. Oops, somebody's phone's going off. Item 2044. Ordered at the Fairfield Town Council hereby waives a reading and accepts the minutes of 2020-07 held on April 2nd, 2020.
Don't move.
Second.
Didn't catch the second.
Second.
Taylor, thank you.
Okay, call for vote.
Okay, I'm sorry, just trying to capture this. John Pachotti?
Yes.
Michael Taylor?
Yes.
Courtney Chandler?
Stained.
Thank you. Peter Lawrence?
Yes.
Stephanie Thibodeau?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, carries. All right. Item 20-45. Ordered the town council hereby considers and awards bids for the West and Savage Streets repairs. Projects facilitated by Dirigo Engineering.
Show move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have lots of discussion.
Okay.
Okay. In looking at the, I go first, Michelle?
Well, that's what I was just gonna ask, if the counselors would like me to go first? Yes, okay. So you received in your packet, and you also received an updated email today. I hope everyone received that.
Yeah.
There was an email that came out today from Dirigo Engineering, which is where they did the background checks on the apparent low bidder, which is Roundy Paving. We received three bids. Roundy Paving for $413,336.10. Pike Industries, $423,927. And Wellman Paving, $501,260. Roundy Paving, we needed to have their references checked. They're not a firm that we've used here in Fairfield. And so the Public Works Director has worked with them, but he also followed up. And is here for questions if anybody has any, but they have worked locally. They did work in Skowhekan, St. Albans, and in Pittsfield. There was a discrepancy in their bid, well, a question that we had with their bid, which was on the detectable warning strips. It was thought that they had bid the wrong project, product, which they did. However, they will use the correct product and have chosen to stand by their original bid price, which is approximately a $22,000 savings. Their references do check out. And we do have the funds available for this project. Almost all of it is currently in our paving savings account. Which has a current balance of $217,463.47. Because remember DOT is going to be paying approximately to do $203,875. So this is a cost sharing project with the state of Maine because Weston Savage are state roads. So what we would be looking for would be for you to actually amend your motion to award the bid to a specific contractor in the amount of what their low, of what their bid was. And after the end, I think that's all I have for you for updates, so, but I'm sure you have questions.
Okay, Stephanie?
I would like to know where Roundy Paving is from?
Newport.
Are we further south that they've ever gone?
No, I don't believe so, Stephanie. From what I understand, they'll actually be buying the paving mix through Pike Industries.
Oh, that's good.
Bruce, what's their timeframe? I, I can't remember seeing a timeframe at all on the project.
We hadn't got that far along with the timeframe until we were ready to award and discuss that.
The engineers, the engineers did contact us today, though. They thought your meeting was last night. But they contacted us today. They are eager to set up a scheduling meeting with whoever the successful bidder is, so to make sure that this gets scheduled.
Yep.
Bruce, are you comfortable with Roundy Paving's references and their pricing?
Yes, I am, after talking with the engineers and reading over all the recommendations and checking of their references.
Thank you.
Very good. Yes, yes, Peter.
So they want to travel all the way to Sydney to pick up paving mix, Bruce?
Yes, that's, that's what they would do, Peter. That's where all of our mix, even if Pike was, was paving here, would come from.
Okay.
You know, the, the only other alternative is to go to Bangor to another asphalt plant up there.
All right, is there any other, any other questions or discussions? All right, we have a motion that needs to be amended, so the person that gave the emotion would amend it.
Who was that person?
That was Peter Lawrence.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept Rowland's payment for $413,336.10 for doing paving in Fairfield.
Any more to cut? Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Christine.
The prior second was from Chandler. And I didn't catch who the second was for the amendment.
Michael.
Michael, okay.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify, that was to Roundy's paving?
That is correct.
John Pachotti, how do you vote?
Yes.
Michael Taylor?
Yes.
Courtney Chandler?
Yes.
Peter Lawrence?
Yes.
Stephanie Thibodeau?
Yes.
Thank you, five zero.
Okay, all right, moving right on then. The next item of business, which is 20-46. Ordered that the town council hereby appropriates to $41,500 from the Police Capital Reserve account for the purchase. I'm sorry, for the, for the purchase and outfitting of one of the new police vehicles.
So move.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Peter?
No, we saw this information in February. I just have a question for Tom. Has he been to the dealership lately to check on this, or test drive any vehicle lately?
We haven't actually been to the dealerships, but we already own a Dodge Ram, the same exact model, and Public Works. Excuse me, our model is a little bit different, but Public Works also operates one of the same types of vehicles. So we're very familiar with those.
When is the, if you vote on this, when will be the possible date of purchase of this vehicle?
They're saying that it's about six to eight weeks. Now, I don't know if there's gonna be a change because of the current conditions. I don't know if they're still producing, or if they've already made some that they can ship to us, but.
Yeah, because I know currently, as the governor's proclamation that no dealership should be selling anything. Because I know some dealerships, they got an email saying, if you sell, you lose your license.
Wow. I, I have not heard of that. I know that the dealerships are closed, and my understanding is that they can still do deals, they can still sell vehicles as long as it's done a certain way. Nobody enters the store, they can do it over email.
I went by some dealerships over the weekend, they've got phone numbers on their vehicles. Because of the social dis- discipline?
Correct.
But I, because I know the governor has set this guideline out, that we shouldn't be doing they're not, they're not essential, the dealerships.
That's correct, but if we do order a vehicle, it would be at least six to eight weeks before we could pick it up, and I'm assuming that we will be through this by that point. I'm not even sure if they will accept the order right now. But if they can accept the order, I think the sooner we get it in, the better, because we don't know what's gonna happen with the market, and we don't know what's gonna happen with production.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a tough one, but if they're closed, just taking orders over the phone, it's, it's no different than a restaurant that is only doing takeout. You know, that you have to call in and get your order and stuff like that. Is what I would presume that it would be, and, and from an essential standpoint. If we got a police department and they're down a vehicle, and they need a vehicle badly, because they have to get on the road to protect citizens, I'd say that's an essential order.
You're correct there, and I would think that that would be an essential purchase for an administration of town to, to do.
Yeah. Yes, Michelle?
And I, I think one of the difference might be too, is that this, remember, this is a estimate, price estimate, and a project that we've been working on since before all of this happened. So I'm not sure what the dealership order is about them not working. I, I haven't seen that. But I would have to think that where it's a police department, it was an existing bid, so it's not like it was something that's happened during the state of emergency. This was something that was going on beforehand. We haven't heard that nothing would be honored, so.
Right.
In, in fact, with the, with the two of the bidders, I did reach out to them and tell them that, you know, there may be an extension to, because this was previously on another agenda. And it was about a week and a half ago, and they both replied they're okay with it, and as soon as we're ready to go, to just let them know.
Okay.
Chief, I want to thank you for going out and getting those additional as well, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. It saved us. I appreciate it. Yes.
All right, any more discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second, so. Call for a vote, Christine.
All right, John Pachotti?
Yes.
Oh, actually, let's back up here.
Okay.
Sorry.
We need a motion for a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, do we need, Michelle, do we need to actually specify the purchase, which dealership, or it's the, up to the amount of?
I mean, you could, but we wouldn't be able to purchase either one of them if, by using the other amounts, because I used the math specifically for the low bid.
Right.
And then a little bit for incidentals, but it was basically using well. So it's using the bid from Darling's Auto Group of 29124. And there's a lettering piece for $400. And then there was the install through Hussey Communications. Which was slightly more than Yankee, but if you actually look at the difference in the bids, we're getting a substantial amount more for our money with the Hussey install as opposed to the Yankee install. So that's who we were using.
Who we typically use for our current vehicles?
Yankee?
We currently use Yankee, excuse me.
Yes, Yankee.
Yeah, Yankee, I'm sorry.
But we have used both.
Correct.
I actually use Hussey.
Yeah. Depends on who gives us the better price. They're, they're both local enough, and they're familiar with our vehicles, and they're familiar with what we need to do. It usually depends on who has the most amount of time to do the work to give us the better price.
Correct.
I'm sorry. The first motion was by Taylor, second by Thibodeau, if you have, if you have an amendment coming.
I don't think so.
Tom?
Yes. No, I just wanted to say that the, the Hussey Communications bid that they put in has a lot more lighting on the vehicle, and that's something that concerns me. I wanted to make sure that it was well enough lit. This is the first time we purchased a pickup truck, and we just want to make sure that everything is done, done correctly. And I was just nervous that if we went with the other bid, we would wind up having to purchase some extra items later on that wouldn't be in or would have to come directly out of our budget.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, go ahead, call for a vote, Christine.
I, I need a motion to amend in the original.
They're not amending.
Taylor, they're not award.
You had no amendment, sir.
Okay. Just a call for a vote.
Okay, John Pachotti?
Yes.
Michael Taylor? Michael Taylor? Can you give me a thumbs up or thumbs down? Yep, thumbs up, thumbs down, work as well. Courtney Chandler?
Yes.
Peter Lawrence?
Oh.
I'm sorry?
No.
Peter, I didn't understand. Can you give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down? Okay, Peter Lawrence is a no. And Stephanie Thibodeau? I can't hear Stephanie.
Lost her, she lost her vocal.
Stephanie, can you give me a thumbs up?
That was a panicking situation. Yes.
Yes, for Stephanie. All right, let me capture that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item 20-47. Ordered that the town council hereby confirms the town manager appointment of the following election clerks and ballot clerks for a term of two years, beginning on May 1st, 2020. And ending April 30th. All right, first on the agenda, 2020, I'm sorry, 2022. Is the names will be Janet Bard, Joel Bichard, Neil Coffin, Kimberly Hawks, Athleen Kep, Barbara Law, Norma Larson, Lynn Rowden, Patricia Shea, Robert Cisack, Unvarier, Arian Willie, Danielle Booton, Andrew Carlton, Pamela Coffin, Richard Fortier, Arlene Julia, Greg Lambert, Angela Newbauer, Deborah Plummer, Doris Pratt, Joseph Rowden, Marilyn Tozier, Zachary Goldar, and Alan Hagan Jr.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, Christine.
John Pachotti?
Yes.
Michael Taylor?
Yes.
Courtney Chandler?
Yes.
Peter Lawrence?
Yes.
Stephanie Thibodeau?
Yes.
Five zero, it's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. Now we move on to item 20-48. Ordered that the town council hereby considers adjusting the date of the annual town budget meeting and related town charter requirements due to COVID-19 public health emergency.
Show move.
You, you don't actually need to take any action on this this evening. This is just an item that's gonna stay on your agenda until we know for sure exactly when it's gonna be, because remember, at your last official meeting, you, you actually did this. But we're gonna keep this on here in case there's a change or anything needs to be adjusted at any point in time as we keep going forward. But remember, right now, you're, you've already set your public hearing and your schedule for your public hearing being May 27th, and the town meeting being June 15th at this point.
Okay. We don't need any vote on this one.
No, you do not.
But we will move on to the seventh order of business. Which is council workshop and other business. All right, the first thing on the order of business is to discuss the Victor Grange property transfer request.
So at your last meeting, well, actually, it was, it was even longer than this. This is dated March 10th. Victor Grange submitted a letter stating they would like to acquire the building next door to 142 Oakham Road in Fairfield, which is the building between the Grange and the center fire station. The town acquired the center fires, that, that building from the bank after it had foreclosed. We had to pay various legal fees and back taxes. Because of the way things are right now, just arbitrarily inviting someone from the Grange to your meeting was just a little bit difficult. So we put this on here as a discussion item to see whether or not you wanted me to start having conversations with Rita Fortin, who is the master slash president at the Grange. And that way, we can get something a little bit better together for you, and then invite them to a meeting to participate just like this and have that conversation. But I wanted to see what council's thoughts were first, before we went through all of that and got them to a meeting.
Yes, Stephanie?
I think that I would like to hear them come. I am in favor of that property being fixed up. The building torn down, and there is a need for parking at that location anyways. I, I think we should have all our ducks all lined up in a row, or maybe it's chickens, I can't remember. But anyways. We need to have them be a part of this conversation. And more than what's written in the paper, so that we can talk. They are asking to purchase the property for a dollar. And I think that that needs to be discussed. So I'm in favor of them coming.
Michael?
Yeah, I would like to have them show up, but something other than our intentions are to knock it down, I'd like to have some kind of a timeline. Just intending to do it, it could be a year, five years, 10 years, really doesn't give us a lot to go on.
Yeah, and I think the problem there too is, is that there is asbestos in that building, so it's gonna, it's not gonna be quite as easy as it you know, appears to be.
Yes, Stephanie?
Do we know for sure that there is asbestos in there? Because I've heard conflicting reports on.
Bruce might know, I, fire department would have more of an, an idea on that one.
I would say.
Yeah, go ahead, Bruce.
I would say due to the age, it's a strong possibility, but there is no definite that it is there.
Michelle?
The other piece that we're thinking is that there's also lead paint that needs to be mitigated. I believe, I was told a while back that the Grange had somebody go in and do an assessment, and it was supposed to be someone who was certified in asbestos assessments. But I have not received anything for any specific information. That was one of the things that the town needed to do before. But I have not received anything for any specific information. That was one of the things that the town needed to do before we could tear it down was the official assessment of how we needed to mitigate any asbestos or lead paint and the abatement process for that. And then the building could be torn down. So um but you certainly can make all of that part of your conversation. And you can, you know, remember, we can always be very creative with deeds and sometimes I've seen there's there's clawback procedures where if things weren't or timeframe and and that sort of stuff. So there are some pieces with that, though, that is going to need to be done. There is a septic system that is split between two property lines, which is between the fire station and the actual house. So there'll have to be some adjustments made if you're actually going to sell the property to make sure that the appropriate land and and setbacks are there. So.
Yes, Stephanie.
Would it be possible to ask the representatives from the Grange to come with a timeframe and also any efforts that they've made into investigating the property for their purposes?
You can easily do that. We put them on your next agenda for a workshop item. And I'll just and and having this conversation helps me be able to relate to them what it is that the council will be looking for. So.
Yeah, I know that uh at one point we had looked at that building be used for a fire education with the fire department and stuff like that. And I know that the fire chief had looked at it and you know, things like that. That's where I think we got the asbestos aspect of it.
We did a few things in there, but I'm not sure if we actually did any of that. Um if you remember correctly, I had tried a while back to get us a Brownfields grant to see whether or not we could use those funds through through the um EDA, so to get that taken care of. And we were not successful in getting that. They did not think a parking law was sufficient economic development, so we weren't able
Right, right.
But, yeah.
Yes, Peter.
I think it's benefit for uh the people of the Grange to come to this the meeting and tell us what they think of. Also too, um a parking space for that location would be benefit the Grange. The the future, maybe if we open that fire department and any activities in that area. It's not any difference than uh the two oh one, the two oh one next to Spencer's gives the towns holding for for uh a future parking lot. They're trying to just get ample packing around the Grange, so no one get hit.
Okay. Anybody else? Any more discussion? Yes, Courtney.
So my only concern that I would like them to address is especially where we think that there's asbestos in the building. I would like them to explain to us along with their timeline how they feel they're going to be able to fundraise for this, because that's my concern, since it is so pricey to get rid of asbestos.
Yeah, well, you know, and again, uh like Michelle said, they have come back and said, oh, there isn't. So you know, I think I think we have the Grange people and and possibly the fire chief too wouldn't be a bad idea, because I know he's been through that quite extensively.
So I will make sure that they receive an invitation for your next meeting. Let them know how to participate through Zoom and all of those various different pieces.
That's right, we're gonna be
And we'll we'll get them on the agenda.
Okay.
Perfect.
Sounds good. Alright, next, discuss MMA's workers' compensation safety incentive program resolution.
So this is a new program offered by Maine Municipal Association. It takes the place of their leader program, which we currently participate in um and provides us with a discount on our workers' comp insurance rates. And so we currently receive a ten percent discount because of the leader program. This will take the place of that. However, what it does require is for the council to vote to sign the resolution that I had sent to you in your packet um in order for us to start participating in that program. It's not much different than what we already do. There's a couple of additional policies that we will need to create. It's it quite frankly, it's things that we already do and practices that we already have. We just don't actually physically have the policy that spells it out the way they're looking at for. Um but the safety committee has been through this, um and I think that this is this is a good piece for us. So I just want to give you an opportunity to discuss it before we put it on as an action item for you at your next meeting.
Yes, Stephanie.
Well, I have some questions. And the first question is, who is on the safety committee?
So that's mostly our department heads. So we have representation from every single department. So that's the safety committee is in staff in-house. So that would be the police chief, the fire chief, the public works director, the town treasurer. I think uh the assessor is also on there and um is Lou from the library librarian on there? No, the librarian is not on there.
Casey Dugas is.
And Casey Dugas.
Yeah, and I'm isn't isn't Amanda also on it?
Yes, and Amanda.
So that leads this leads to my next question. With all the departments that are involved in the committee, are there separate goals for the departments? Or are you working under a blanket of of the same goals for the town?
There there are different policies dependent on the department, Stephanie, but we're all going towards the same goal of having all these policies in our individual departments in place.
Okay.
Correct. There is some similarities between the fire department and the police department, but it's quite different between us and Public Works. So there are some, like he said, there are some different policies. But for the most part, we already have them in place.
Okay, yeah.
So you're really looking at the objectives to reach the goals that make it all different. Is that right?
I think that we pretty much already meet the objectives. Um it's just a matter of coming up with a couple of new policies and um getting this resolutions aligned by the council.
Alright, so there's tiered incentives mentioned with the MMA program. And I didn't know if we as a town had incentives for our employees as well.
No, everybody's expected to equally be safe.
Right.
There's there are no tiers. So the tiered system through Maine Municipal Association has to do with what your municipality actually does and has in place. How many policies you have. I mean, it could be as simple as the fact of do you or don't you have a safety committee? There are, you can drill down into this information that I sent you on MMA's website and it gives you more details as to what the tiers are at. So where we have, uh the town has the shape award through the Department of Labor. We were at what would be considered a tier three for the leadership award, the the leader program having a ten percent discount. So the way that it works is we have safety policies that are some are the same. Nobody is supposed to ride in the back of a pickup truck standing up. But also, safety policies are different and tailor-made to each individual department. And by having the whole group work on it, the the safety committee, one of the things they actually do is they review issues that we've had, safety problems that we've had. Like one of the topics a safety committee had was uh what happens if there was a major incident at the town office? And someone came in that was armed. What would happen with the staff? How would you get out? What if exits were blocked? You know, and they they do these collectively and it works really well because you have all different um assets in the community that are able to work on this. What one department may see, another one may not. So it works out great. So we really think um because the leadership program is going away and going over to this program, it's not going to be much different than what we already do. It's not going to put any more undue hardships on us for anything. It's just the fact that it's a different program and it'll allow us to continue with the ten percent discount that we currently have.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or ideas or so on? Alright.
So we'll put this on as a action item for your next meeting.
Action item, yes.
Uh consent agenda or just a regular action item? Consent agenda?
I would say consent agenda. I mean, it's not not rocket science.
Thank you.
We need to you know, we've got the good plans and stuff like that. We need to participate in these programs and get our discounts as much as we can. Okay, uh and moving on to number three, which would be any other council business. Starting with Stephanie.
I would like to uh remind our citizens that we have cattail trail down at the Powell Fields across from the track field. And in these times, it's always nice to get a good weather day and go out for a walk. So remember this, it's cattail trail for people to walk on.
Yep, okay, uh Peter?
Yes, um I just want to make an announcement. Um there's three ladies in town that have delivered meals to seniors. It's um the senior meals program. Two ever businesses, Karen Hands, home care, a daytime restaurant, and Shelley's used cars in conjunction with um the senior program at the um Grange. They're delivering meals the last three weeks. And this week, the the first week was like fifteen, second week was twenty five. And this week's is gonna be over thirty to thirty-five meals to the seniors. If any um area um person or neighbors uh think a senior is in need, please contact Barbara Bailey at four five three nine four seven six or Shelley and Nikki at three one four six eight nine eight or Caroline at Karen Hands, seven four two zero 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 two. Also, my daughter Michaela has been involved in this. Also too, um they have been making masks. I have a mask here. I don't know if you can see it or not.
Yeah.
They have made, oh, in the in the last three weeks, a hundred masks and delivering these masks to the seniors and anyone who wants them. When they deliver these meals, they have the the senior's name, address, and phone number. They give the senior a a call to tell them they're there. And if they want their meals put up on the doorstep or if they do want them to come in, these are three ladies will be in the protective protective mask and gloves. They talk to the seniors. Also too, um a request came from Bob Bailey of well, the seniors that if they are looking for puzzles, books, crossword books, and search search and find books to um help the time go by. These seniors are um afraid to go out and they'd like just be well-known saying that they um are wanted around the town. So um if you know anyone wants to um donate or help out, just give us a call. So.
Okay, Michael? You're muted, Mike.
I'll be jiggled.
There you go.
There you go.
Uh I'd just like to thank everybody at the town for all the hard work they're doing and uh keeping everything running. Uh it's much appreciated and it's uh it's extraordinary circumstances. These are all being done under and
Yep, Courtney.
So in addition to what Peter brought up, I actually know of a couple of different um Maine-specific community Facebook groups where it's just people getting together saying things that they need, things that they have extra of. Sometime last week, I met someone on there and we delivered trays of eggs to people because a restaurant donated them. Um so if Christine is okay with it, I think that we should probably advertise those groups either on our Facebook page or on our website, because it's a really good resource, great when people need it.
Send me what they are, Courtney, and we'll make sure we can get that out.
Thank you.
Peter?
Also too, I forgot to mention too, um these ladies have um um like torture items, uh paper towels and toilet paper in their vehicles and they're asking the seniors if they need anything. So this funding is coming out of personal pockets. We did get some donation for turkey from a turkey deep um farm to make turkey pies, things like that. So we they're just doing it for a grateful right right now. This hard time and um and just after the seniors, I said.
Okay. Anybody else? The only thing I had to say was, I I had mentioned it earlier, you know, I'll ask a question of Michelle is is that I guess the other town towns in some instances are having trouble collecting their uh their taxes, their real estate taxes. I got the impression we were doing alright in it.
We seem to be doing fine right now. Um I haven't I haven't looked recently at property taxes because of course your fourth installment isn't due yet until next month. Um but I can tell you that uh there was a stack of mail at least six, seven inches high today that included individual sewer payments for the sewer bills that went out from your last meeting when you did the commitment. So folks are paying. We have mentioned to a lot of people that if you don't want to spend extra money on a stamp to mail us a payment, you can actually drop your payment as long as it's in an envelope. Uh we don't recommend that you drop cash um and that it's clear what you're paying and you can use the Dropbox at the library. They have a Dropbox for book returns.
Yeah.
So we've been having some folks use that Dropbox and when the librarian goes in to check on things daily, we're getting those pieces so we can get them posted. But again, we, you know, you can call us. We can take a check by phone, credit card. You can pay online, so you can go through our website if we're not in the office. But um so far, things seem to be going just just as fine.
Good, because that's uh that's what I had mentioned and and I think that was some of the uh concerns of the other towns with the school budget, you know, paying the school is that
Right, so we were able to pay this
Collect their property taxes.
We were able to pay the school. And again, like we talk about every year during budget season, the importance of having an undesignated fund balance that is healthy. Um and our undesignated fund balance is healthy and we have the ability to continue to pay the school, to make payroll, to pay our bills. Um we do have the three months worth that we do need to have in case something would happen. We actually have more than three months worth. So we're we're doing okay right now. Um but we do ask folks to remember that um again, the council doesn't have the authority to stop the interest. So folks are reminded to try to make their payments on time. We have a lot of people who are contacting us to register vehicles, even though they don't have to right now.
Right.
And doing a lot of those different kinds of things. So we are still still working every day. So.
Excellent, excellent. Alright, uh the next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, April twenty second, twenty twenty. And I presume we will be on Zoom again.
At this time, yes.
The way things are going right now and it's at this point in time. Let's see, anybody want to sign anything?
We do have a just so you're aware, we do have a collection of documents here that we are keeping for signature. So like tonight, when you you approved the warrant, you will eventually need to sign that document.
Right.
So we are doing that. Um and we're we're keeping track of all of those things here for you.
Well, I mean, can we can we show up at any point and just sign them?
So I wouldn't recommend that you do it at any point because um actually Amanda is holding on to those and I know Christine will also have some. So if we know that you're coming, we'll make sure that each staff member has put them aside for you so that you can get them signed.
And when I said, when I said any point, that's what I meant was if we contacted you or something and said, hey, I'm I'm in town and I can run over and sign those documents for five minutes and
Right.
That type of thing.
We'll hand you a clipboard right out in the parking lot with a pen. It's not a problem.
Okay. So if anybody wants to do that, why feel more than welcome. Alright, so we'll skip the recess. Uh we'll skip the executive session since there is none. And then I will look for a
We should adjourn?
That's what I'm looking for. We are adjourned.